Recording is in process. Don't say anything you don't want on Facebook coming up. Are we ready? We call this meeting to order. It's a regular city council meeting for the city of Holiday Island for May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three at six P M. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome.
Councilmember Dumas.
Here.
Councilmember Elwood.
Here.
Councilmember Graves.
Here.
Councilmember Coon.
Here.
Councilmember Mills.
Here.
Councilmember Pittman.
Here.
And Mayor Keats.
Here.
Everyone present, Mr. Mayor. I will declare a quorum. I have one agenda item to change. I'm gonna scratch the discussion on the planning commission membership. I have not been able to find time to take to work on that, so we'll scratch that. Do we want to have a discussion or any motion on investments? Um, I was gonna do that under old business. Okay. Uh, do we, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
The agenda.
The amended agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You made a motion to approve. Uh, our seconded it. Any discussion? If you have a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have minutes from four eighteen, four twenty-seven, and five four that were distributed. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So who?
Is there a motion to approve?
I have.
End of seconded it. Any discussion? If you have a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Do we have any ceremonial recognitions, proclamations, or memoriam? There are none. We'll move on to April financial statements. Okay. Okay, there is the balance sheet. Uh, we ended the month with approximately five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in the bank. Uh, two hundred and forty-seven thousand of that is a general fund. Uh, seventy-five thousand in the reserve fund, and two hundred and fifty-two thousand in the street fund, making up that total. Okay, moving on to the general fund, the activity there. Uh, total receipts were twenty thousand in the administrative portion of the budget for the month, making a total of ninety thousand for the year. Um, and so we're about, let's see, through April would be a third of the year. Um, which would be thirty-three percent on the, our share of the county sales tax. We're a little below that, about thirty percent. But last year, that's close to where we were last year. I think it was like, uh, thirty-one percent or so, uh, through April. So, uh, considering probably during the winter, the, the sales in the county are not as large as they will be, uh, during the summer. Um, and then the municipal aid, uh, we're at twenty-eight percent there. So that twenty-three hundred is a constant number and will probably be receiving. In July, we received a couple thousand dollar advance payments. So that will probably pick us back up to, uh, where we'll be close to budget. Uh, our expenses, uh, I think are pretty much in line. It looks like when you look at dues fees and licenses, let's see, where are we?
Just look there.
Up there. We're ninety-five percent of the year there, but that's because we pay the municipal league dues, uh, in January. Uh, other expenses, uh, the center point accounting, the forty-three percent is a little high, but, um, there is one lump sum payment there that we paid early in the year. Other expenses, uh, website is about eighty-six percent. But we, well, we prepaid Linda two years, was it?
Yeah, we probably had to pay an extra year because they had.
For an extra year. So we're not paying monthly on at least a part of that. Um, so this is the administration, administrating part of the budget. About seven, eight hundred dollars in expenses, uh, for the month. And if we go on, um, to, uh, building and construction, uh, we had no permits. And during April, our expenses were down to, let's see, what's our total there? Only three hundred dollars. And when you look at some of the items there, uh, telephone, we're high on telephone. I think part of that's possibly is purchase of telephone. Um, supplies, a lot of that, I think, is purchase of code books, things like that. Um, otherwise, we're in pretty good shape there. Code enforcement, um, total expenses, the two hundred dollars during the month, five hundred for the year. Uh, and we've got eleven thousand dollars in the budget there, so we're, we have not spent much there yet. Uh, district art, we're just getting started on. No expenses, uh, for the month. We've had, uh, some legal fees earlier in the year. Um, lighting commission, uh, a hundred and eighty dollars worth of legal fees during the April. Uh, and we're, we're low on expenses there yet because we've got a four thousand dollar budget there. Uh, public safety, uh, we're just getting into, the biggest part of that budget is for the deputy sheriff. And we have not received any bills from the county for the, on the sheriff contract yet, so that's just getting started. Um, solid waste. Uh, we had seventy-five dollars of bag tags, three hundred for the year. So not a lot. We're low, low budget on that. On the expenses, we've got, uh, a hundred dollars for April, so, and eight hundred for the year. So we're, uh, we haven't spent much of anything there yet. So, uh, overall, we had, took in ninety-six hundred dollars more than we paid out, yeah, during April. So there's a balance of two, uh, two hundred and forty-seven thousand there. Uh, next one, uh, this is the general fund reserve. No activity there during the month of, uh, April, still a seventy-five thousand dollar balance. Okay, maybe it's wrong. Why don't you go on? Is the street fund there? There's a street fund, okay. Uh, we took in twenty-eight thousand, almost twenty-nine thousand dollars during the month of April. Most of the expenses are, are expen- income is close to thirty-three percent of the budget, except for property taxes, and most of those will be received, uh, this summer and this fall. So we're, we'd like to be in pretty good shape there. So we ended up a month there with two hundred and fifty-two thousand in, uh, in the street fund. Any questions? I guess I can comment on the street fund. You know, we're, we're building a pretty hefty balance there. And, you know, money in the bank doesn't fix potholes. But, um, I, I had it on my to-do list for this week to call, um, Jonathan Clements, uh, at R.D.O.T., who is the engineer that works on the, uh, grant projects once, once the committee reviews them. And, uh, so I want to find out from him what the status is of when they, um, when they're going to get together and review grant applications again. Now, we sent in a grant application for la- from last year, and they kicked it back because they said, you guys just got one, so need to wait a year. So after the first of the year, I resubmitted it, and, um, I never even got an acknowledged one from them that they received it, which I guess I probably should have followed up a little sooner. But, uh, I want to at least confirm that they got it and that it didn't get lost in the mail somewhere. Um, you know, the way the timing on this works, you know, we probably wouldn't need any money before. If we get awarded a grant in December, they would, um, put that out for bids in the February timeframe, try to issue contracts around April. So, you know, we wouldn't, the earliest will probably need any money for any state, you know, um, match projects would be next April. So, um, we can either continue to save our money and do a huge project at that time, you know, add to what the state is gonna do, and, uh, you know, do more. Or, you know, we can see if there's something that we could spend some of our money on, um, this year. The, the state will only manage projects up to five hundred, uh, they say five hundred thousand, but the last time they, they took ours for that, it was six hundred and three thousand. So, you know, the most that we would need to hold back is probably three hundred thousand. You know, to have that on hand by next April.
Mayor, uh, there was some chatter on Facebook or next door, probably next door, about another cave-in along the state line.
There was a, a tree went, a tree fell over on the power lines on the state line right next to where the landslide was several years ago. And the first reports were that there was another landslide, and the state line drive is closed, and there's a tree down across the road. Fact of the matter is, there was no new landslide. It's just, you know, an Arkansas thing, you know, when it starts raining, trees fall over. And it happened to fall on a power line, and it was right where the power lines cross over state line from one side of the road to the other, so it knocked the power line down into the road. The tree's been cleaned up already. Carroll Electric's got everything all back in shape, but there was no landslide.
Check. Watch information.
That it, Wes?
Yeah. Any questions?
Alright.
I move that we accept financials.
Lynn made a motion to accept. Jerry seconded it. Any discussion? If you have a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Financials are good. Okay, committees. Lynn, you got any updates on the planning commission?
Uh, this announcement is gonna go out, uh, probably tomorrow. And it's, uh, putting out there on social media that we're having a public hearing on June thirteenth. And we're going to, uh, have the public comments on definitions and terms that we've, uh, found that we need to make and some planned unit development regulations and the development subdivision regulations. Primary subject matter in that material is, uh, allowing subdivision of lots or parcels in how they have, how they're handled. Okay, this evening, June thirteenth.
And then, you know, the process is, depending on the outcome of the, uh, hearing, the planning commission could make a, could pass a resolution recommending that the changes be, uh, sent to the city council for approval. And then the city council would prepare an ordinance to update the zoning ordinances. Um, once this is all done, you know, I told Lynn, because, you know, really, Lynn doesn't like to take credit, but Lynn has done the lion's share of the work on all of this. And I told him that, once this is done, we basically have everything in place that we could expect to have to deal with, probably in my lifetime. Uh, there's probably some other things we would like to add, but, you know, if the planning commission wanted to, you know, take a little break, take a deep breath, and, and, uh, you know, not pursue more changes very aggressively, that would probably be okay. But it will be up to the planning commission if they want to pursue any further changes.
And Arkansas statute requires that we meet formally once a quarter, so we won't be void of meetings. And then if, if, uh, because of the regulations we have in place, if someone wants a conditional use permit, that process is there, so we may be meeting formally just for those permit requests.
Right. Okay, uh, thanks Lynn. Anything else? Any questions on the planning commission? Jerry, um, I don't think there's much update on the broadband.
No, we need to decide how we're gonna disseminate that survey.
Yes. Next week.
Okay.
That'll be on the agenda for next week. We'll have to look at that.
Okay.
Okay, um, we don't really have any special committees, but we also don't have any place to, on the agenda where we talk about, uh, deputy reports or the status of code enforcement. So I'm gonna use this space on the agenda to, um, at least not necessarily talk about the deputy report, although we have one, and it'll be, it's posted out there with the public documents. Uh, nothing really earth-shattering to talk about. But I did meet with our deputy, Deputy Jeff Bilbo, today. We had a nice, uh, nice meeting. Um, the first part of the meeting, we were, um, Aaron Hoyt, our code enforcement officer, was with us. And we had a lengthy discussion about using a specific but serious problem that we have with one property here in Holiday Island that is, uh, has morphed from just a longstanding code violation problem into what could be a dangerous situation, uh, for the, uh, people that live around it there. And, um, so we had a nice discussion about how law enforcement and code enforcement is gonna work together in situations like this where it's gone beyond simply getting somebody to clean up their property or something. And, uh, and, you know, I don't wanna go into the specifics, but we have an action plan of how to go about it. We'll see how it goes, and depending on how it goes, we may, um, we may do a little bit of, um, we, I may discuss, you know, more public forum, and how we handle that situation. Um, just for everybody's, yeah, for everybody's information, you know, how is the process gonna work? And, uh, this is kind of our, our first, um, venture into real serious code enforcement. And I can tell you, there's a dozen properties in Holiday Island where if people think that we, that the city is just a big joke, and we don't need the city, they need to ride shotgun. When we visit some of these properties, they'll change their mind in a big hurry, so.
So, so do we have a process for the not-so-regis violations?
Yeah, we've, actually, we've been working on that already. We've probably gotten a half a dozen properties cleaned up already, just voluntarily, because Lynn talked to them. You know, we're not, you know, we're not advertising that, but there's been some progress made. And we are moving forward with, now that we have the district court thing working. And, you know, Aaron, Aaron's been sick for about a week, so he's just back on the street now. So we are moving forward with, uh, code enforcement in a, in a serious way. I guess one other thing on the deputy report, while we're not from the deputies. Um, Deputy Bilbo is out here every day. Uh, the plan is for him to be here full-time, forty hours a week. However, the sheriff's department is still shorthanded. Um, they have two candidates that are in the police academy, but it's gonna be three months or more before they come out, graduated. And, um, so in the meantime, if he's here and there's, um, a call, you know, for service, like a, like a car wreck or something like that, um, outside of the city limits, but, uh, in this part of the county, he's still gonna respond. And he said last month, he did that three times. He had one, uh, or two traffic accidents and one domestic disturbance or something. Um, so it's not much, but he, uh, our contract says that they're not supposed to get called outside the city, but they are not to the point where they can make that, you know, that level of commitment yet. And they're having a heck of a time trying to hire and retain deputies, so we'll see how this goes. We can't, we can't force them to put somebody out here if they don't have anybody. So I think the county is gonna have to have some serious discussions at some point about what they pay deputies in Carroll County because, uh, they can't keep them. They're, they're, they're a lower, low payer, you know, in the area. You know, you just be, become the training ground for everybody else. So, um, we're, we're making progress, but we're, we're still not exactly where we wanted it. And you have the fire department report up there. I didn't have that on the list to talk about, but we're getting, uh, monthly reports from Chief Yates, and, uh, that's available on the website for anybody to view also.
It will be.
Or it will be. And, uh, they are, they are extremely busy.
One observation I made, I appreciate the fact that he doesn't have the actual address. You know, so it keeps the information a bit private. It says the name of the street that they were on.
Look at that one on Cherokee Place where they went two days in a row. Rush fire? Rush fire.
Yeah. And at some point, they need to involve the city in those because, um, it's probably illegal burning that, that created the fire.
There was one on Holiday Island Drive. Shame on you, Dan. What was from either?
I also saw Holiday Island Drive. Wasn't my house.
On me.
I was noticing there were three, um, up at the top on Bandy or Bandy Drive. No accidents. Is there, uh, hazardous location or something there?
Yeah.
Excuse me?
On Bandy.
On Bandy, Bandy Drive.
Yeah.
There's a Bandy in MS call.
See, there was three accidents up there.
Vehicle accident. Well, that's an MS call excluding a vehicle accident.
Oh, okay, so I mean.
Just an MS call. Look at the four fourteen.
Four fourteen.
Yeah. There's a street called Division. We don't have a.
Division Street.
You don't require it.
No, we don't have a Division Street.
Not for us, no.
Yeah.
No, we don't have a Division Street.
It says building fire.
That could have been a Holiday Island. No, it wouldn't be a Holiday Island. That's a whole other city.
Well, all the zip codes are wrong for Holiday Island, so.
You're in Jamaica Springs.
That's seven two six three two. Zip codes are in Jamaica Springs.
They're all six three two.
Tell Randy where he lived.
Yeah.
To Randy, we're cleaning up his database. I have, I get trauma pies when I see six three two.
You go in the epileptic fit.
Right. Any other discussion on, uh, reports? I think I'll add, uh, I'll modify the agenda to add those as subcomments or subcategories.
Okay.
Um, old business, I didn't identify it or itemize it as a, as a old business item, but Wes did get some rates for, um, CDs, so we might as well talk about it. Yeah, I, uh, submitted a request. I waited until May so that we would have more current rates to look at. Um, I submitted a request to C.S. Bank, Harvest, Bank eighteen eighty-nine, and Equity Bank. I did receive a response from Harvest and also Bank of eighteen eighty-nine. And eighteen eighty-nine responded that they didn't have any special rates that they were offering. Um, Harvest does have some, if we wanna go more short-term, their rates are, you know, not too bad, four point oh six and four point two five for twelve and fourteen-month investments, uh, in CDs. Otherwise, the highest is, um, C.S. Bank with their, and actually, it's a seventeen-month CD, not an eighteen-month CD, a four point seven percent. They had, they didn't respond to my request, but that is what they have posted and what they're showing for the month. Um, and, um, I will say, I, and I don't have it on here. I don't think it showed up with Harvest. They didn't respond. And I actually asked for rates from twelve to twenty-four months. They do have a three point eight percent rate for seven months. We don't wanna go long.
I'll, I'll add to this a little bit. I was up there last week myself on Friday. We took out a CD from.
At C.S. Bank?
At C.S. Bank, and they had changed the rate of four point seven six. Actually, they changed it to an eleven-month, and it's good until the end of this month. And it's a four point seven six for eleven months.
Yeah.
And we took out one in a minute.
Is that what the council would recommend that we do then? I mean, that's higher than any rate from any other bank.
I like the shorter term because the Fed's talking about raising rates again, so I don't wanna miss out on a five and a half percent.
I like the good old days.
Yeah, I like the good old days.
What was the place from both along the way?
Yeah. I did find, I think it was Bank of the, was it Bank of the Lakes or something like that, which is up in Missouri. I don't know which town it's in, just, I can't remember, but they were like five point oh two and five point oh three on a couple rates, but I stuck with Holiday Island Banks. Yeah. For what we talked about. I don't think we wanna go out of state for sure.
To answer your question, I'm in favor of eleven-month, four point seven six.
Somebody wanna make that motion?
Probably we do that.
I'll second you.
Lynn made a motion, and that's for a fifty, what did we say, fifty thousand-dollar CD?
I assumed it was for the entire seventy-five thousand reserve. That's what I recall discussing in the past.
That's what we're talking about.
Is that, is that what your motion is?
Yeah, hopefully we invest seventy-five thousand. Yeah, although we invest seventy-five thousand for eleven months with CS Bank.
Seventy-five or fifty?
Seventy-five, that's my motion.
I was saying.
That would close the checking account.
Well, you'll put another line in the reserve account, right?
Okay, but as far as the bank goes, I don't know, they'd have zero balance. If we're talking of the reserve fund that's got seventy-five thousand.
Yes.
So, if we put it all in a CD, there would be nothing left in the check.
But it's seventy-four thousand.
Over seventy thousand.
Oh, really?
I'll amend it to seventy thousand.
All right. Lynn made a motion to invest seventy thousand of our general fund reserve money in a CD at CS Bank. That seconded it?
I seconded it.
Yes. Any further discussion?
Would you want to, we may need to include in the minutes who is authorized to be on the account for that CD. Currently with our accounts, it's myself, Dan, and Linda.
Let's vote on, on doing the investment, and then we can make another motion as to who's authorized.
Because it would be, it will need to be a motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll vote. No, the ayes have it. Now, does somebody wanna make a motion to authorize myself and Wes on the account? That's the ones you would, you would recommend?
I'm seeking.
Although we have the, the current bank officers listed on the new account. So, if it says three, it's three.
Yeah, they were included like that.
Okay.
Second.
Very, Lynn made a motion that myself, Wes, and Linda be the authorized representatives of the CD. Jury seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
I didn't, and let's see, and we decided on seven here.
Yes, seven.
All right, moving on to new business, the first thing left on the agenda is status of district court. Just for everybody's update, we're basically ready to rock and roll. I just need to get with the district court clerk to find out how to get the court dates. I've provided all the information that they were looking for. I just need to find out from them how we get a district court date assigned and what documentation they need along with the citation when a case is coming up. And I need to do the same thing with Clint Schiele. I've talked to him, he said, anytime he's not in court, he's ready to sit down and talk about what information he needs for prosecuting the cases. So, we're ready to move forward, and Lynn, I mean, not Lynn, Aaron is starting to move forward with enforcement. So, maybe in a month or so, we'll, I mean, hopefully, no case will ever go to court. Hopefully, they get all resolved before you get that part. But if they don't, we're ready now.
So, Dan, what is the process right now? Is he, he writes a warrant?
He gives them a certain amount of time to abate the problem.
So, what is that, what is that amount of time?
It's, it's, there's no fixed amount. It's gonna depend on how complex the problem is, and, you know, some people get seven days, some people might get thirty days. You know, you gotta be flexible with the situation. Some of it is the ability for, of the people to abate it also. They may be more than willing to fix the problem, like the roof's falling in on their garage, and they desperately wanna fix the roof, but they don't have the money to do it. So, we gotta work with them on, on how, how to deal with that. So, if it's just junk in the yard, it's gonna be a pretty short timeline. But it's gonna vary with case. And then if, you know, if they don't abate it, then they get a citation, and they have to appear in court. And if they don't appear in court, then a warrant is issued, and it gets turned over to the sheriff's department to go and.
But their fines, regardless of whether it ends up in district court, right?
No. You only, the fines have.
If they're violating the code, the state agent violates the code, fixes it, and there's no repercussions?
Fines have to be delivered by the court. That's the way we set our system up.
But fines are specified in our code.
They are specified in the code, which is guidelines for the district court judge.
You initially get a notice to correct the problem, and if they don't correct it, then you get a citation to go to court, which is where you just make the court appearance. And you either pay the fine, or you wanna go to a jury, or, I mean, a real court. I mean, it's, it's just a, what do you call it? It's a, you just make an appearance, and the judge, once he's guilty, guilty and.
Yeah. In the old days, we would call it a hearing, but they don't call it, it's a pre-case review or something like that, I don't know.
From arrangement.
But, but Ken is right. I mean, they could pay the fine without going to court, just like a traffic ticket, you know, you can pay it without going to court.
But, but what I'm hearing you say is if they abate the situation before that time runs out, there will be no fine.
Right. That's the way every city does it, that I know of. I think the law would kind of require that you give a person an opportunity to fix it.
So, when, that day we went down there, was it about half of them, you know, requested a court hearing?
Why, let's use the, the burning leaves. I mean, it's abated, once it rains on it, then the fire is out. He's still violating the code.
I don't know, I'll have to see what, what recourse we would have.
Well, I just think the point, the point of having the rules and the laws and the ordinances is to get them to fix the problem, not, not so we can make money as a CD.
Well, okay, again, using the, the burning of brush and, and, uh, once that's done, he's abated.
Yeah, yeah.
And then next week, he does it again, and they say, oh, don't do that, you got seven days to not do it again.
The, the, the second time, he'd get a citation. He wouldn't get two warnings.
Okay, I, I guess what I'm getting at, do we have that written down somewhere that people will know?
I, I have to go back and read the ordinances to see.
Yeah.
I'm taking it.
But you should, he, he's right, you should get a warning, and then if you don't fix it, you get another warning.
No.
Or the, or a citation.
You get a citation.
Depending on which way our thing is written. But once you get the citation, you own money.
Right.
Unless the judge.
Unless you wanna take it to court.
Unless the judge decides not to issue a fine.
But he, if, if he doesn't, if, if he wants to go to court over it, that's fine. And the judge will make a decision, otherwise, they can pay the fine and not go to court.
Right.
And that's the way I see it.
That's the way the judge asks you. They ask if you're gonna, you're gonna pay it, or you, or you request a court, court hearing.
Yeah. That's the way a traffic ticket works.
Yeah, and you get court costs and nothing. If they get money, they say, I'm a court hearing.
Well, and that's, I think that's why the judge has to have some latitude, because he can, he can fine somebody five hundred dollars, but if they don't have two nickels to rub together, what are you gonna do? I mean, so he might sentence him to, you know, forty hours of community service or something like that instead, I don't know.
But I also think.
I'm new to this also.
Yeah, and I also think, as the code enforcer and the mayor, you have to be sympathetic if they've got a real problem that they can't solve.
Absolutely.
Before you take them to court.
Absolutely. All right, communicating with the public. I put this on because there was, you know, ongoing discussion about what we should do, you know. But I'm going to open this up to the council members, talk about it, because this is not my area of expertise. And however, I would, there are times when I would like to just put something out, like, well, let's use the example of the, of the trash pickup, the, the spring cleanup that we had in May, a couple of weeks ago. It would've been nice for us to have something, instead of waiting for the HISA newsletter to come out. Would've been nice for me to just put something out there that said, hey, remember, you know, we got spring, spring cleanup coming up. We really don't have a good mechanism for doing that. So.
I brought this up. The, the current process that we have for notifying the public is submit, but we can advance our notices to the HISA office for putting in their newsletter that goes out on Friday. And so, when in situations like Dan's talking about, or when there's a tree down on the state line, we'd like to inform the public, we have no mechanism through HISA to do that. I'm, I've grown to the point in the social media world of posting our notices on two or three Facebook pages, and a Nextdoor page. It just seems like, wow, that's an awful lot when there's only a limited number of people do that. What I prefer to do is have, like, HISA has used a product called MailChimp, where we can send out to registered people and email, and it can get out to as many as we have subscribed. There are charges associated with that. An alternative is through our website. It's hosted by a company called Wix, and they have a campaign program that you can get created. And they have guidance to help us get through it, where, how we get started, how we grow our mailing list, and how we track our performance. So, there's a, an integration in our website software where we can get people to sign up to be notified. We create the image and hit the broadcast button, and it goes out to all those registered people. That'd be a way to communicate. Most people have email. If they have a cell phone, they have to have an email account, have a Google account to get on the thing. So, they're gonna have a connection to it. Whether they read their emails or not is their decision, but it's a way that we can communicate these messages that we wanna get out on an infrequent basis, as well as our normal communications. I'd like to notify people when the planning commission gets their documents ready and say, hey, you know, the planning commissions are ready for view. You don't have to wait to find an announcement, you know, that kind of thing, just a little word. So, a quick reminder, we're meeting on Wednesday or Tuesday to talk about X, Y, Z. You might be interested.
What, the cost is based on what the number you send, or how do you use it?
With the MailChimp product, it has to do with how many emails you send in a month, and there's, there's costs associated with that. But I don't think it has to do with the number of subscribers, it's, here it is. Email send, six thousand a month for twenty-dollar a month fee. Or there's a free one for a thousand dollars for a thousand emails monthly with one person managing it, and we need more than that, so. Anyway, get around those, suppose. There is different fees with MailChimp. I haven't gone into the Wix deep enough to know how it's managed, but I don't think the app is gonna cost that much.
It might be included free.
Might be included. The app attachments in our, in our webpage are relatively cheap, you know, like thirty-five bucks for a one-time deal, that kind of thing, I've seen on other things.
I would like, I like the idea of it being tied into our webpage, you know, using the, the one service provider. If it's, you know, if it's a good effective product that they have.
Could we do a newsletter like HISA does?
Certainly, it'd be an email format, because like theirs is, it's a big PDF.
You as a newspaper guy could write it.
I would do that, until I piss somebody off.
Well, we'd like that to have an editor.
Somebody who edits it.
You, you would not wanna do it right after reading Nextdoor.
So, like, in their examples for email marketing, they have templates. In the email marketing, they have templates already prepared that you modify and change and do what you want, create a header, you know, there's things that they do. Apparently, the free plan is two hundred emails. I don't know if that's a monthly or whatever, but.
That's not enough.
No, that's two hundred emails, not, oh, I guess.
Oh, email addresses?
I wondered if that was contacts, or is just, I send out one email to a hundred people? Is that one, or is that one hundred? I'm thinking it's one.
Larry, do you have any idea?
We'll have to dig into it.
HISA sends out?
I have no idea.
I think it's over a thousand they have on their list.
Oh, yeah, they have.
On MailChimp.
They have like sixteen hundred people or something in there.
Sixteen, fifteen, sixty. Sixteen, fifty right now.
That's, it's.
But I'm, I'm open to doing this, figuring out what it's gonna cost and how it works and whatever, if, if you want to, in my mind, if you want to suspend using Facebook and Nextdoor.
Yes, I'm in favor of that.
Because that's my, that's my price. I'll give up Facebook and Nextdoor, and I'll look on this. If you wanna stay there, you gotta find somebody else.
I've already given those up, so.
Yeah, I, I think we should do it. I mean, even if it's twenty dollars a month or something like that, that's nothing to be able to have an effective communication tool. You know, I think we found from our views on our website, that when I do put a message out there, you know, people do read it, they do go out there and read it. And so, you know, people are looking for information. And a lot of times, you know, people, when they think we're not doing anything, it's because we're just not doing a good job of communicating the things that we are doing.
Yeah.
I would like to see you continue occasionally addressing, whatever you call it, setting the record.
Setting the record straight, yeah.
I mean, like that, the, the landslide on the state line, I mean, that, that was not very huge at all.
Yeah, well.
What do you do to set in the record straight on this?
I didn't see anything on, so, I mean, I, I didn't see it on social media, but.
A certain, they just.
We're walking here to, um, real estate land.
Wow. Were they protesting the trees falling off?
No, they, they talked about it being a landslide, and, and the reason I brought it up is the last time.
I, I could only praise the fire department for how quickly they got it resolved, and Carroll Electric, it was amazing, you know.
I know, but there's a certain number of people that, that believe that there was another landslide. And the last one, when it came into the Eastman on the state line, it was like, you know, maybe exaggerated, but a week or two after we finished paying for it, we had to spin, so.
So, there's a template for the form that you put on your webpage. And when they fill it out and hit this transmit button, it populates the database for the, I heard that far, populates the email list. So, it shouldn't be that difficult to manage.
Sounds, sounds good.
Should we make a motion on that right now to approve going forward? Or do you wanna do a little more research first?
I need to do the research and let you know what it's gonna cost, and how many customers we can have, and, you know, at what level, what's our cost gonna be? Because there may be some things that I haven't seen for, for pricing.
Lynn, can you, I, I think I probably know the answer, but is that one way only? Can they respond from an email?
I don't, I don't know. We have a way for people.
We've got this broadband survey that we've got to get out.
People can communicate with the city through the website using the email address contact@cityofholidayisland.com. And there are three people monitoring that account.
We can put a survey as a page on the website, that they could go in the blanks and answer the questions. That's one way, but they have to do it. I mean, they have to actually, you can go to the website and enter some stuff.
Yeah.
But it could be done that way. And you could put a, if, if we got this, this going quick enough, you could send them the, but they'd have to opt into this in order to hit the message to do it. That's problematic.
I was gonna say, there are already people who believe somehow on a list have somehow done something in our website to be connected.
Yeah, they have, there are, we have a list already.
Yeah. So, I just don't know, I haven't dug into what that list means or what it's used. So, there's a tool within our website app that I think will work for us. So there's a tool within our website app that, um, I think will work for us.
Yeah, we may have to do some sort of a, you know, promotional, um, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Campaign.
Right.
To get people to sign up for it.
The best way to get your survey done quickly was we put a deal on the website and then we blast out to every social media avenue we have to get, to drive people to the website to enter their data if they're interested in getting better broadband out in Holloway Island.
Yeah. My, we're getting off the subject a little bit, but my concern about the survey that we're gonna have to take is it's gonna have questions on it like, you know, what's your upload speed? What's your download speed?
Yeah.
What, what are you paying for? What are you getting? And things like that and, and.
People will not know.
You know, a lot of people in Holloway Island aren't gonna have a clue what we're talking about. You know, a couple of months ago, I would've been included in that group. So there's gonna have to be a.
It has to be.
A little bit of a tutorial.
I was gonna say, we can do a YouTube tutorial to show how to use AVG to get to the app and show us how to do the website test.
We could, we could do that.
Right. And if you, if you provide a, a meal and free beer with, with.
For nineteen ninety-five, come to your front door and do it for you.
Or we could just come with some numbers to plug into the.
And, and the, the worst part about the whole thing is, is that the people that we are trying to reach are the underserved. So they don't have the tools that it's gonna take to fill out the survey.
They're gonna have, I have no internet, so I have no answer for that question.
Didn't even know I had a problem.
Or I have no clue that there's even a survey out there because I don't have a computer. So.
Where do we end up with this?
I'm gonna work on the email marketing campaign.
Find out what the. It's an absolute cost, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll have it something by the next meeting.
All right, next on the agenda is, uh, renting office space from Shane Perry. And I apologize to the board of commissioner members that are here. I've, uh, talked to Danny about this, but I have not contacted any of the board members about it. So I apologize if you may be hearing about this for the first time. But, um, upgrading out of one room, um, has worked well for the first couple of years. But now we're getting a lot more activity. Um, you know, our building inspector is, you know, in the office almost every day working on something. Soon our code enforcement officer is gonna probably, um, you know, he could do a lot of it from home, but we need to have, you know, a, a code enforcement office, you know, you know, set up so that, so that our entire code enforcement operation isn't dependent on somebody that might quit tomorrow and have everything in his basement. You know, we, we can't, we can't operate that way. We wanna be able to start posting regular office hours, uh, even if it's only three hours a day, five days a week, but at least we would have posted office hours for people that wanna contact us or need something from the city, uh, that they know when to come down. Uh, and, you know, there are many, many times when I have to be able to talk to people on the phone, but, you know, without being interrupted, or I need to, um, talk to individuals without being interrupted and having three meetings going on in one room at the same time. So that caused us to start looking for our options. Um, one option would've been trying to find more space here. And unfortunately, that, you know, it's just not to be had. Um, there really isn't any extra space on this floor. You know, there is some open space downstairs, but there's no real good way to get to it. And, um, and it would take a certain amount of investment to convert it from what it is now with overhead doors and stuff like that to some sort of usable office space. So, um, so the city is already, um, renting space up in, uh, up in the park next to, um, Hot Box Pizza for the sheriff's, um, substation out here. We're already paying for that space. Shane Perry owns that building. And he's willing to give the city the rest of that building, the rest of that building, which used to be First National Bank or something like that, rent-free for the rest of the year, which would give us a little bit of money to, um, you know, to spend on making some change, some changes internally that we would need to, to make the space more usable. And then next year, I have to confirm this, but the number he, ballpark number he shot at me, uh, earlier on the phone was fifteen hundred dollars a month, which is only sixty-five or sixty-eight cents a square foot for the amount of space that we would be getting. And we would be right next to the sheriff's office. So it would say Sheriff's Office, City Hall. And I think that there's, you know, an advantage to that. Uh, it'll, it will be incrementally a little bit more expensive for the city because, uh, we would have to pick up the utilities and things like that. Um, but not a lot more than what we're paying right now.
Could we, could we meet there and will we still meet here?
Um, that's part of the, there's, there, there's a, a big open area. When you, when, when it was a bank hit, you walked into this kind of really, really big lobby area. And in the middle of that big lobby area was a little office with a glass window in it that I assume they used to talk to people about loans and stuff like that. Um, and then off to the side, there's already a counter in there and everything where the bank tellers and people like that were. And there's a drive-through window there and everything else. Um, I think that big room in the center with the glass window would have to come out and we would have to put in another, uh, wall to partition off the lobby to be used as a boardroom. But I think, you know, for a typical board meeting where we have, you know, five people in the audience, it would be plenty big for that.
I, I can likely be a really good.
The, uh, the other thing is that, uh, it, it has the old dank wall there, which means we have fireproof storage. And that's something Wes and I have been talking about for a year and a half already and not come up with a plan to deal with it. Um, but, you know, a fireproof file, file cabinet all by itself is like fifteen hundred bucks. And it takes, it takes six men and a mule to carry it in the building because they weigh so much. So.
I think there's an extra value.
Yeah. Now, I did talk to Rick Reagan, cause they, you know, Rick's got this building down here that, um, the concrete block truck almost took out one time. And I asked him if he'd be, cause it's, they haven't fixed up nice. It's got a pretty good parking lot and everything else. And I asked him if they would be interested in, uh, in renting that. And he said no. He said that they, uh, they don't wanna be in the landlord business. They want to sell the building. And they're not quite ready to sell it yet. And he understands the city doesn't have money to buy a building, so. The, this, this, uh, you know, what Shane is offering is a heck of a deal. Uh, he did say that, you know, that, that first year price, you know, he would, he would like to negotiate that up, you know, maybe incrementally over, over a few years. So I, if we do this, I think I would want to have at least a three-year agreement that's got the red lock in.
Yeah, we don't wanna be negotiating every year.
Right, yeah. Get, get everything all set up the way we wanted and then say, okay, now the rent's twenty-five hundred dollars.
Right.
And three thousand dollars.
And you can't back out then.
You know, rent agreement like that, um, do the AC units, they're part of the building and he's responsible for maintaining that? Is that how that works?
We'd have to, I thought it was probably gonna have to be in the agreement.
Okay.
You need to make sure that the utility, the, uh, air conditioning and all of it.
Cause they're, they're probably ten years old plus, you know.
I mean, it's his responsibility. Yeah, you gotta remember, you know, he's in, he's in, he's in business to make money, so. I mean, he's gotta cover, he's gotta protect himself too.
Sure.
So, uh, there may be some routine maintenance that we'll be responsible for, but if it's anything major than he is or something like that.
Sure.
Then we'd have to have a well-written agreement.
We've got two ladies that'll do the cleaning.
That'll be stripped from the official record.
No, I, I think, I, I think it's a, I think it's a very wonderful opportunity.
I don't believe with all those.
Yeah, we need backup over and on.
I don't know if either of the, you know, VOC members would like to make a comment on that, uh?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. I really like it, and especially the fireproof, uh, for your records and your, on your financial. Uh, and the area downstairs, I think Shaq Keaton, when I was on board before, made that into a star of fireproof wall, but there wouldn't be another one down there in one of those apartments. Uh, one of the questions I would have, you wouldn't need a drive-in anymore, a drive-through, uh, lane?
Not at this point, however. Um, you know, someday I could see where the city could be doing billing for something and that might be handy having a drive-through window or something. I don't know. I mean, we, we wouldn't have any near.
But I would say, uh, having your office near the sheriff's deputy's office would be wonderful. Uh, and, uh, which is, with things that are going around the nation now, it's just scary. Uh, if you have one person up there, somebody comes in, really crouches you about something. Now, the deputy might not be there, but at least there would be other people around instead of just at the end of this building. So I, I think it would be, if I was gonna vote on something, I like that. I think it's really valuable.
But the, you know, there are a couple of probably disadvantages to it.
Yeah.
It's about, it's not centrally located for the people in Holloway Island. So, um, it's very handy for me.
Yeah.
But it's not centrally located for the general population. Although I would imagine that most everybody goes up to Sunfest or Dollar General anyway from time to time for the gas station.
I think it could be a, a good, good area for the city to be there, particularly with the sheriff's office there.
Yeah.
Uh, it makes sense.
It, it, for, for the drive-through traffic on twenty-three, it, it makes us look more like a city, you know? Like, like, um, cause very few people drive through down there.
We put up signs that says city of Holloway Island parking lot.
That, there is, that, that is another advantage of that building, at least today. The hot box isn't open during the day and we're not open at night.
Yes, we are. At six PM, we're open.
Well.
One night a month.
As long as it's not rented.
We might get our people to come to our meetings and then they can go have pizza.
Any, any chance that the professional building on the other side of the drive is available for a price that we can afford?
The professional.
Where the doctors and the dentists used to be?
Oh, medical. That is for sale, but that, that sounds property.
I think they won't know.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
So we'll have that next year.
Do you want a motion that we pursue that or just?
Um, I think at this point, I'll just firm numbers up. I'll, I'll come up with a cost for leasehold improvements and what it would take to, to, um, to get the place ready and then some moving costs, cause I don't, I don't wanna have to move the furniture and everything up there. I think we need to hire some, you know, some.
I'll check with him and make sure he doesn't have somebody else on the hook.
No, he calls me in.
I'm trying to.
I told him that we would have it on the agenda for this meeting.
Uh, Dan, there's two cities. So there would be three offices plus the big open room for.
Say it again.
It says there's two twelve-by-twelve closed offices and a twelve-by-thirteen office. The twelve-by-thirteen would have to be removed.
The way it's laid out is, uh, on the far right end of the, of the space, there's, there's actually three rooms. And it could be three, they, they had two offices and a break room. It could be three offices if we want, three offices if we didn't need a break room. It's just another room. They just used it for a break room. And then there's two bathrooms across the hall from that. And then that, the twelve-by-thirteen has the room in the middle of the room that's got the glass window in the front. That one would probably go.
And it would be handy cap accessible.
And it's handy cap accessible. And he said that he'll, he will, uh, you know, if we, if we rent that space, he will repaint the outside, the front of the building. And, uh, and he's already got the, the panel for the lighted, uh, sign up on top. He already has the, you know, the insert for that. All we would have to do is pay for.
Lettering.
The lettering on it. So he said that's probably five hundred bucks right there. So, okay, I will firm that plan up with Shane then and, uh, have it ready for the next council meeting. And, and then I'll, I guess I, I need to give something more official to the VOC that, that we're planning on doing this.
We have a contract that says we pay him so much a month and there's a timeframe of when we have to notify them, you know?
There, it says ninety days notification. Um, but it also, uh, it says it's renewable annually and it was originally signed on, um, the end of March. So on April first of this year, it should've been renewed. But I don't think either, you know, you know, Dan, neither Danny or I, I don't believe remembered to renew it. So, um, but there is a clause in there that says it renews annually. And unless somebody gives ninety days notification.
Do we get to keep the furniture that's in that office space down here?
That's ours, sir.
Okay. Okay, then you probably just need some extra chairs if we have a, a meeting room type of setup.
We will, we, we will have to buy some additional furniture and tables and nice black tablecloths for the board meeting.
And we, we already own two of these chairs.
Yeah.
We can get those.
Bad news for the VOC, two of these chairs belong to the city.
And, and these were donated to the city as well.
We won't rob your blinds on the way out.
Larry has a truck for a stay later.
Next time we come in here, everything will be locked in that closet.
That's why two Larrys named with their trucks today.
Okay, I will, I will follow up with that as a project. Uh, the last thing on the, on the agenda here was, uh, codifying city ordinances. I've heard, um, uh, one comment that maybe it's too early to do it yet. And I've heard, I think, maybe one comment that we would like to do it. So I am totally flexible. We need to do it sometime, but there's nothing time-sensitive about it.
How much do you figure it'll cost?
The last time I talked to the municipal league, which was, you know, probably when we first opened, opened our doors, it was five hundred dollars to set it up initially. And then after that, it was so much a page every time they updated. But it may very well be more than that now, I don't know.
I was on board when we first codified the districts. And, and it got. And it got, you know, if you're making a lot of changes, it's pretty expensive. I'd, I'd like to see us, you know, get, you know, you get a fight, you know, get things a little more solid and make sure that we're not going to have to be making a bunch of changes right away. And I, I don't see any, I don't see any pressing need for it right now. But it is a lot handier, I agree.
It's what people are used to looking for, right? Go to a website.
And I would think probably, you know, after we get through the court processes to, you know, how things work, you only may have to make some changes.
We definitely wouldn't do it before we get all the rest of these zoning ordinances in place.
Also, I would suggest we wait until we have an animal ordinance and a VRVO ordinance.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. We're, yeah, we will, we will, I, I do want to have the business license ordinances in place before the end of the year, which ties into the VRVOs.
I think, you know, Eureka Springs, doing it, you know, first of January or something.
She's just on the boat, she's buttering it all. Getting wild. What did I just borrow and then stop on? I'll silence it.
Then next week, you have to, next week when you say please turn off your cell phone.
Have you watched it? I don't even have a watch, smart or otherwise.
Well, in lieu of that, because I am asked questions by people on occasion, you know, what's the ordinance on this? Or what does it say that? Or where do I find that? Maybe I can work on putting all of the ordinances into one giant document. So you can hit a button called search and put in your keyword. I'm looking for speed, like speed limits. And hit the search button and it shows you where they're at. That's what I'm missing. That codifying or codifying the ordinances gives us those tools.
And it would help all of us because.
Yeah.
Although we need to find out what the, what the actual cost is.
Eureka Springs, there's, works a little different because they have a different publisher.
Linda, you're going to be at the state municipal committee. You may run into the person that does that and ask them what they, what they're charged on these days.
I left a phone message with Lanny Richmond to ask, to ask him.
He may not be there anymore.
Okay.
Lanny's gone.
Well, the answering machine was, was lawyer number seven. Isn't Lanny Richmond lawyer number seven? Anyway, I just asked for the name of the city he's using, the municipal, so I can see what their website looks like. Because I think we need to have one of the strong search tools.
The, yeah, Lanny left, I forget where he, it was right, right after the legislative session ended. He, he left, I forget where he went. So I think the next, Lake Erie seems to be, or, yeah, Lake Erie. I would say would be probably the next person to try. He's pretty knowledgeable. Anything else on codifying city ordinances? Public comments? You want this mic? Because we had to steal the mic from over there.
Ken Brown, Cypress Point Lane. I'll try to be, I left one hearing aid at home, so I'll try to broadcast a little more. I'd like to commend the mayor for the comment that he made about Lynn and all of you as the hard work you do. I was on a committee to try to inform the city. And I know what you did then, a lot of you were on a committee, several of you. And I know now, just watching you over the past two years, you do an awful lot of work. And you get the same high pay as Larry and I do. Zero. But anyway, I really, Lynn, I know, we really appreciate all of you, all of you, what you do. Second comment I'd like to make is on the covenants and the code enforcement. I talked to you a couple of months ago about, there was something on social media about if somebody was going to come and make me do something, I'll take care of that person, meaning violence. And I think the mayor answered me about that, about the concern. So I would like to see anytime that Aaron feels that, you know, there's some danger involved, or even David on building inspection, that we would have a deputy that would be available. I'm sure he will. The other thing is on covenants. And probably Larry knows more about covenants than anyone in this room. And that's the way Holiday Island started. But they're very onerous to the person that's trying to make a change in the neighborhood. Fifty-one percent of the people have to sign a document. You have to get a lawyer. I told you what my experience was at, very costly, five thousand bucks. I don't have an extra five grand around my budget right now to do that. But you can do it with what you talked about earlier tonight. The other thing in that area is groups that might help somebody that has a garage roof fall in and they don't have a penny to fix it. I think there's three or four groups that I can think of right now that may at least have the man or woman power to help. And maybe we could also give some funding to do those rafters and the roof and so forth. But I, I think that I understand what you're saying, that you don't want to, Jerry, you, you had some questions about it. We want to be community-minded, but we can't let things go on and on. And so if you get to that point where you need some help, I would be willing to help try and organize a work crew, if you will, to help out. Thank you.
Okay, David, there.
Any other public comments? Then we can move on to council member comments.
I'd like to say that my name's been mentioned a couple of times. I don't do this on my own. Every one of you helps me with what I do. If it's not just a word of encouragement, it's the feedback that I get in the meetings that makes it happen, you know. It's not something that I worked on independently. You know, the work of putting the covenants together was a matter of just identifying language that sounded good. And we, as a group, picked Taunty Town for a model. And we went through that, paragraph by paragraph, word by word. So, you know, the good was to all of you. It's not just what I did. Thank you.
One of these days, one of these days, we might want to go to Taunty Town and see if that was a good city to model ourselves after.
I want to be at their meeting tonight, just to see how they handle the planning commission. They meet the same night as we do.
I can't leave it, I don't have my chair.
All right, any other council member comments? I have one thing that is not really a mayor, well, it is a mayor comment, but it's from the mayor of Eureka Springs. He sent me a note the other day that said, and I'm going to, I apologize to this lady for, I'm sure I'm going to mess up her name, but Judy Gigi, G.I.G.G.E.Y.
Gigi.
Gigi?
Yeah, she lives over in Bakersfield.
Judy Gigi. Well, he says she lives in Holiday Island. She's submitted her resignation from the Eureka Springs Hospital Commission. The hospital commission is open to anyone who lives in the western district of Carroll County. The hospital serves all the western district, including Holiday Island. We would appreciate if you could make an announcement at your city council meeting of this vacancy. And if you know of anyone who would be interested in serving, please have them contact Mayor Berry's office for an application. And if we have any questions, we can give them a call. So if you know of anybody or if you would like to be on the hospital board or know of anybody who would possibly like to serve on the hospital board, get ahold of Mayor Berry and they'll take your application. And that's all the comments I had.
Then one more question, can you, where do you stand on interviewing your colleagues?
Oh, I, we've interviewed four people, Linda helped me. And we've pretty much have it narrowed down. Had four good candidates, really good candidates. And we've, we've narrowed it down to one. And I'll probably be making an offer to that person before the end of the week. Very qualified.
Yeah, I was impressed with the qualifications of all of them.
The good thing about Holiday Island is that there are a lot of talented people that retire here. And, you know, they don't want to work full-time, but a little extra money would be nice. So this is the perfect kind of job for them. So, okay, scheduling, we have no special meeting scheduled. So the next regular meeting will be.
June twentieth, why?
Yep.
June twentieth.
Or Tuesday.
Yes, and I'll be leaving the day after that to go to Wisconsin to, for Terry and I to celebrate our fiftieth wedding anniversary. We're going to have a big family reunion. I hope my kids are paying for it.
Yeah.
But we're having it at the same place. It's a place called The Nobles. It's where my grandparents had their golden wedding anniversary. My parents had their golden wedding anniversary celebration there. And we're going to have our golden wedding anniversary there. So three generations of the same family at the same restaurant. It's one of the oldest restaurants in Wisconsin, if not the oldest, continuously operating restaurant. It's been there since before Wisconsin was a state. And it's very popular in that area.
Do they throw fried rolls?
No. They have cheeseburgers. They have amazing chicken and the, they, they do things family-style. You know, you sit down around the table and they bring bowls of chicken and ham and, you know, dressing and. Wonderful.
Your marriage is sounder than mine. I would never announce my anniversary a month ahead of time.
I would, I would never even think about the kids paying for it.
That should happen.
You don't know my kids. Can I borrow a couple hundred dollars to take you to dinner?
When my parents had theirs, my two brothers and I basically roasted my parents, you know. About comical things from our growing up and everything. It was, it was funny because my dad, even though he's third genera, or was third-generation German, third-generation American, only spoke German when he started school as a kid. He learned English as a kid. And, and when he and his brothers and stuff were working the farms, they always spoke German. Unfortunately, my mother didn't speak German, so I never learned it. But when my dad would get mad, he'd cuss in Germany. So we had this whole comedy routine about that. About how we were sure that, we didn't understand what he was saying, but we were sure he was praying because we thought we were hearing God in there every once in a while. All right, with all of that, motion to adjourn.
Wait a minute.
What?
Don't we, weren't you thinking of having a workshop? This is another topic. You have a whole slew of things that we need to discuss.
I, I, I said, well, it was, it was posed to me that we need to have some sort of a long-range planning workshop. And I said, okay, send me your ideas and I'll try to put an agenda together. I can get any ideas.
I thought it was a good idea. You listed all the ideas.
Yeah, you had two or three things.
Well, I said the things that I was planning on.
They sounded real good.
So why do we need a workshop?
But we need to figure those things out.
Uh, okay. I'll dig that back out again and I'll, I'll just ask.
Well, you agreed to where you're at.
I did too. That's why I was expecting you to schedule it.
You agreed you were going to put the library in there.
Dig it back up. I remember doing something. I remember the last step of being, putting it back on you guys and saying to me, think about what you wanted to, you know, what your vision was for.
I think if we just talked about those ideas.
I sent you some.
Yeah, I saw, I saw some.
He's asked you to resend it.
I'll find them.
All right. You have a sandbox.
Never too late to try again. All right, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Jerry made a motion to adjourn. We'll have a second.
Second.
Then seconded it. Any discretion on favor say aye.
Aye.